Good evening.
Good evening.
Wanted to call to order our school board meeting for this evening. Rogue Paul.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
This is Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Present.
This is Lasher.
Here.
This is Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
Kyrie Brunson, our student board representative from East CLC.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. At this time, we'll be led in our pledge of allegiance by Kyrie Brunson.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see Mr. Woodson here this evening. I gotcha. So, okay.
Here he is. Just in time.
Before we begin with our community and school reflections, we're always happy to
see former school board members take the time to come and to observe or visit our activities here at the school board. We know they're very busy persons. And so, we're grateful to have Debbie Walsh with us this evening, a former school board member, now an employee with the Board of Elections, but she's also a board member of Project Grad. So, not only coming to observe, but she's keeping her hands well greased and working in public schools by working with Project Grad. So, at this time, are there any community reflections? School or community reflections?
I'll start. Couple different things. Like everybody, I went to State of the City. I'm not going to talk too much about that. I think it was well covered in the media. Attended the Buptle PTA meeting last week, and among other things, exciting thing that's happening there, they started a partnership with Akron County Regional Food Bank to have a food pantry in the high school. So, that's just getting that off the ground. It's not happening yet. They have some details they had to get done before that happened. Also, went to Akron Roundtable. And very engaging speaker, Brandon Krostowski, I think I pronounced that correctly, but he started a restaurant called Edwin's in Cleveland, and employs people who have been incarcerated or now released and getting them into job training and getting them in and out of job skills. But the neat thing about his story was his own story. Started with incarceration for something he did as a, sounded like a young adult, may have been an older, you know, child, but that sort of put him on his path. But I always love to hear successful people who started out with something negative, but, you know, took a crooked path to get to a successful place, but also for him to a very helpful place in life. Also attended UNCF, United Negro College Fund fundraiser, it was last week already. That was very interesting, as it always is. Our superintendent, David James, is on the panel with, I can't remember the president's name from the college, but it was very interesting. And a quote that stuck out for me from that, that even, it got the master, put the master ceremony at surprise, and he said, I'm going to start using that phrase, but he said, he was talking about his people, and they were not slaves, but they were enslaved people. I thought, just a, oh, it was positive of spin that you could put on that, I suppose, but it was a very interesting luncheon as well. And let's see, lastly, I was at a panel for leadership Akron, talking about health insurance, and they brought up the telemed partnership that we're having. And my understanding, that's just going to be medical for the schools that pilot's going into, but part of their discussion was also talking about mental health. And the panel had somebody from Akron General, from Children's, and from Soma on it, and they were talking about how they are incorporating mental health in, when they look at somebody who's ill, incorporating that, and what, from a mental health standpoint, may be exasperating the physical problems that they're having. And they started talking about telehealth with children psychology. And psych, you know, psychology. And I didn't realize, but from a children's psychiatric standpoint, there is a huge shortage of those people with those skill sets in our community. And talking about, to some people who are in that field, it's just not a quote-unquote sexy field to be in, I guess. So, people just don't go into it, but there's a huge shortage. And they started talking about telemed from that standpoint as well. And then I asked a question, well, are we going to be incorporating that with Akron Public Schools? They said, well, time out, we'll slow down not yet. But I got sort of too excited, I guess, about the prospects of that and how that could help our students. But that was, once again, a very interesting panel discussion that was for about an hour. So, been a good couple of weeks.
We just came out of the In the Round season for the arts. I was fortunate enough to get to attend one. I wish I could attend them all. I don't know how Ms. Dujic and Mr. DuVier, I don't know how they've slept the last couple of weeks, but because they've been so busy, I did get to go to the Choirs in the Round at Kenmore Barfield. It was very enjoyable, as always. Think the thing that I always love the most is how encouraging the choirs are to each other. There's always a true rooting for each other. It's not a competition, it's more of a wow, look how well you did attitude, and just cheering for each other. So, I always love seeing that every year. Also attended the Akron Roundtable, State of the City, but the Roundtable was very impressive. Remembering that second chances can work, that second chances do work. I loved the UNCF luncheon as well, especially the focus on historically black colleges and how that can be such an impactful part of our students' lives. And I loved being reminded of that on Friday. And also at the State of the City, I did run into some lovely young police officers who are interested in recruiting for the city, and they were extremely excited. They would love to come present to the board at some point. It was kind of short notice for them to turn it around, but you may hear from them, Mr. Pendleton, about coming to talk to us about what role we might play in helping to create the police force of the future from, with, you know, to grow our own, to get people who know and love this city to protect and serve it. So, a good conversation that I hope continues.
Wow, you guys just forced me into the rotation. All right then. I, I, I had the opportunity to attend Torchbearers Annual, Annual Meeting, was it, and it was a very enlightening moment. It's the first time I attended this event. I've heard about Torchbearers and all that, but it was in honor of two CEOs, I guess, or former president, Bill Considine, from Children's Hospital, which has always been a champion for children. He was being honored that night, and also Chris Richards. That's it. Okay. So, both of those gentlemen were being honored that night, and it was really a nice occasion. There were several of our board members who sit around this table, who have gone through Torchbearers. Patrick Bravo and Morgan, are you currently still there?
I'm an alum.
Okay, she's an alum. I didn't know if you were old enough, so that's why I asked. But it was very interesting, a real engaged group of young people, and some of you guys will probably journey through there someday, but a very great group of young people who are progressively active in the community, in all different arenas, trying to impact positive things that are going on in the city. So, that was a very nice event. I mean, I was impressed by the new president. She was just, I mean, a phenomenal speaker, you know? She just was so good. I was like, this is wonderful. But just saying that, I also attended Firestone Soup Fest, which was my first year doing that too. But it was really nice. I kind of meandered in there alone, and I got picked up by a couple of people who were in attendance, and they were like, they invited me to their seat. They had no idea I was a board member or anything like that. So, they invited me to sit down with them and dine, and I thought that was just so wonderful for them not to know me, and they introduced themselves, invited me to their table. We ate soup together and got to know each other a little bit. And of course, they knew some of the other people who sit around this table, too. Lisa Massfield, they also knew Tim Miller and also Patrick. So, I guess you guys wander in there often enough, too. But it was just wonderful to see people embracing strangers, you know, in a community event like that. So, that was really wonderful. And then I had the opportunity of going down to the Akron Public Library, where a young lady just did an individual show, or drama, of Sir Jorner Truth. I mean, she did a one female, like, play, all in and of itself. So, that was wonderful to see, and there was a good amount of people in attendance, and everyone was raving about her performance. It was really great, especially for one person to just get up there and depict a whole story of one's life. So, I think that's all I can remember right now.
Anything else?
I'd like to share.
Yes.
So, I take part in my school's drill team, and what we do is our J-R-O-T-C cadets. And this week, this past weekend on Saturday, we went down to West Virginia to compete in the drill. And our R O T C is headed by Master Sergeant John McLean, who we like to call Top Mac. It's like a father figure to all of us. But yeah, we traveled down to Parkersburg, West Virginia, and ended up at Parkersburg High School, where the drill we took place. And our drill team took first place in armed platoon, unarmed platoon, and we took third place in color guard, which I commanded, and third place in our first year squad. Another event that happened with the school building itself is that we partnered with the East CLC's College and Career Academies of Akron, we partnered with Bridgestone Firestone to aid our automotive pathway. And Bridgestone has erected its name upon our school building on the outside of the automotive garage near the main parking lot entrance. And the students of the automotive pathway are excited about the partnership because of the opportunities it provides. And one of our students was actually recognized, his name's Zachary Smith, for his outstanding achievement in the automotive pathway. Then, one final event is our school's musical. And this year, it is annual. And over 30 students and staff members are involved in the making of this production. Ms. Megan Meyer, our choir director, is ahead of this year's performance. This year's musical will be performed on Friday, March 8th, and Saturday, March 9th. I am a proud member of this production, filling the role of Daddy Warbucks.
Thank you very much. Any other reflections?
I've got nothing to follow that, but I have two quick things. The first is I got a chance to go to the, Windsor hosted a math competition on Saturday, and it was elementary, middle school age folks doing math work from 9:00 AM in the morning to like 11:00 AM. It was fantastic. And I think one of the things I was most excited to see is how many girls there were there, getting their trophies, getting their ribbons. It was awesome. I was a math minor in college for a little bit, and my classes were very much male-dominated, so it was really cool to see the future of math. Feels much more gender balanced. And then I also got the chance to go to a really fantastic event this morning with Reverend Walker. The Rite Aid Foundation has partnered with Akron Public Schools, in addition to several other partners from a national level, to put on a prescription drug safety network, and we've been piloting it across some of our schools. And Reverend Walker and I got to actually sit with a couple of students and see them go through a digital curriculum that talked about prescription drug use. And the module that we were looking at was all about a specific prescription drug and how you could interact socially when people offer this to you. So, it was fascinating. Thanks very much to the Rite Aid Foundation, and there were fantastic folks in attendance there, Representative Tim Ryan from federal level gave some remarks, our minority leader at State House, Melia Sykes gave some remarks, State of the Oregon did, Reverend Walker did, our assistant superintendent. It was a huge lineup of really amazing people talking about it.
Well, since we're going this way, I'll keep going. I had also the opportunity to go to the State of the City, which a number of us did attend, was well-attended, nice event. It only had one thing I thought maybe we could have had a little bit more about Akron Public Schools, but they did talk about the I Promise, and they had the I Promise students there in part of the video, which was nice, so to see that. The second event that I had the opportunity to go to was the Firestone All Sports fundraiser, and my daughter dragged me, and of course, being an alumni from Firestone, dragged me there, and I went, but I had a good time. They had raffles, they had silent auction, the food was great. So, it was a nice event, and it was nice to see that how all of the sports teams have came together to raise money, not just for one or two sports, but for all sports, so they encompassed all the sports, the activities they had in the school. And then last, yesterday Reverend Walker and I had the opportunity to attend official dedication of the Linda F.R. Omobian Resource Center at Helen Arnold, Helen Arnold CLC. It was very well-attended, about 250 people. They didn't think there were going to be that many people, but there were a good number of people there. We even had some of our staff, Deborah Folk, Dr. Williams Woods, and Mrs. Outley, who were there as well. But it was very nice, and the highlight to me of that, they talked about Helen Arnold, who started it, but how Linda Omobian carried on, but then there were two individuals that were really good, actually, I should say more than just two, but two young ladies that did a very good job. One portrayed Mr. Omobian, and she came in, she had her glasses down like Mr. Omobian does, and she read, and she read a portrait of a phenomenal woman, and she was really, really good. It was fun to see our student, and she didn't miss a beat, and they thought she was done. She said, no, I'm not done yet, and she went on to continue. So, she did a very good job, but there was also Zora Brown, she did an outstanding job as well. And these kids were very, very talented, very, I mean, these two young ladies did an outstanding job. But then there were also four young individuals, a young man who played the drums, and three others that were vocalists, and they did a very good job as well. So, it was nice to see our students were incorporated, and all those students were students at Helen Arnold, I'm sorry, the kids who were in the band, and the young lady, Serenity Reed, was from Helen Arnold, but the other young lady, she was from our STEM Middle School, I believe it. So, she did, they did an outstanding job. So, I'm always excited when our students are doing something good, so it was really nice to attend that. And Mr. Omobian, the event was very, very nice and elegant, so it's well-deserved. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick notes, and I appreciated what Mr. Miller was talking about a minute ago regarding telehealth, and it's interesting because sitting on the Board of Child Guidance and Family Situations, we run across that all the time, there is definitely a shortage of child psychiatrists, psychiatrists, and we keep them on staff and actually had piloted and worked in that telehealth space for a while and provide those services. So, it was just interesting that you were talking about that, because it has been a newer, more proactive way to kind of deal with that shortage. Also attended the State of the City, so won't say much about that, other than just to say a thanks to Mayor Horgan for mentioning Akron Public Schools, talking about the work that we're doing specifically around college and career academies and I Promise. And then tomorrow is the Akron County Regional Food Bank's kickoff breakfast for Harvest for Hunger, so if you are going, you will see the drum line from our Buptle CLC marching band under Kevin Calavan. They're going to be, I don't know if I'm really supposed to say that, but they're going to be there to provide a little oomph to tomorrow's festivities. So, if you're going in the morning, prepare to be woken up.
Thank you for all of your expressions. As Bruce Alexander already mentioned about the official dedication of the Linda F.R. Omobian Resource Center, I do have programs for anybody who did not, was not able to attend and would like to have them. And again, Zora Brown is the daughter of our own.
Marissa.
Marissa Brown, and she did an outstanding job representing Miller South and representing APS. So, it was well-attended, as Mr. Alexander had mentioned, Colossively was also present, and was present.
Senator Whitfield.
Right, Sister Whitfield was present. Very diverse gathering, very representative of so many factions, community factions of our city, so we're appreciative of the Omobian family and the Helen Arnold family that was represented there, two outstanding women who have served the Akron Public School Board. And we want to thank the staff, again, Sister Fulk, to make sure everything was taken care of, the principal, Miss LaMonica, for the work that they have done there. So, we want to thank you all for your contribution to make sure that that went well. I had the opportunity to go down to the Urban Network Workshop, and the workshop focused on the Ohio Distress Commission, and we need to pay a lot of attention to that. House Bill 70 is still looming over, not only our school, but many of our districts that in 2020, if there's not a change, many of our larger school districts will be affected and be under the control of the state, which a CEO would come in and take over all the responsibilities that we would normally have as board members. We would no longer have those responsibilities. The only thing that we could do was to issue a levy, but we would not have authority on how that levy would be spent. So, we need to be vigilant. Right now, Youngstown, East Cleveland, Lorain, but it's knocking on the door in some other areas. So, one of the key areas that they were talking about is revisiting, looking at the report card, the state report card. Does it actually demonstrate or represent how our students are doing? We would say a resounding no. Because of, in the recent years, the standard for our students has changed at least three, four, even maybe five times, before students are able to get adjusted to the end-of-course exams. So, we need to be, keep our eyes and ears open as to what's going to come down the pipe with our legislatures in the House and Senate, as well as being concerned about our fellow board members that are under this distress commission, as well as staff that have to deal with what's going on. So, we wanted to share with that a couple of fun things. I had the opportunity to go to hear Gospel Meets Symphony, and again, what a celebration of both gospel music and the African-American tradition and symphony celebrating that together. So, we were happy to see the Akron community come out once again, and a fine member, and many of our students, staff, and others were represented in the choir, as well as in the other activities. This morning, as was mentioned with Rachel's message, they handed out a wristband, and the wristband says Rachel Anna de Mayo, and on the inside, it gives forever in our hearts, and gives a information of how you can get in touch with Rachel, rachelsangels.org. And Rachel simply was a young woman who was having some problems studying, took some drugs. The drugs were laced with cartfentanyl, and she died. The emphasis of what we experienced this morning was students learning to be able to talk to other students on how not to fall into the traps of taking drugs, receiving drugs from other students who may say, oh, this may help you, this may help you sleep, this may help you study. Use what the master God gave you, which we're going to see in a few minutes, demonstrated by Litchfield. You don't need any other extras. Use those gifts and graces so that you can be able to excel, so that we understand. Many of those cases happen when athletes, some of you may be in sports and you've had an injury, you've taken some pills to soften the pain, but sometimes there are alternatives that might be used instead, so talk to the healthcare providers. So, we don't get addicted to drug pills that will lead us down into a negative road that doesn't lead to our success, but in hurt tragic and unfortunate ways that led towards Those are my highlights. And again, when we have our break, Mrs. Outley has some little refreshments or snacks for board members that will be to my left when we take our normal break, if you want to partake of those. We don't have anyone to request to address the board. We do, however, have several communications and recognitions, the first being Litchfield, and I will call upon Mrs. Jessica Sacks, who will come, interim principal, to introduce her students and staff from Litchfield, who will make a presentation for us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. Before I begin, I just want to draw your attention quickly. Board members, we placed one of these at your seats. With the help of Sarah Dujic, Joanne Isaac, the IV coordinators of the Firestone Cluster, and the principals of the Firestone Cluster, we did put together a little, you know, just a little flyer to let you know where we're at in the IV process and what the schools have been doing. I know it's hard for you guys to come to every event that we have, and we'd like to let you know where we are in our IV journey, and thank you for letting us take this IV journey. It has been a great road, and as you're going to see tonight, we have some students that are really learning a lot about how they can help and affect their communities, and they're having a really, really good time doing it. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce our sixth graders, who are working on an interdisciplinary unit, and they come to you tonight with some information regarding the heart, and they want to, have a little proposal for you tonight. And this is facilitated by Miss Stacy Myers.
It is our civic responsibility to raise awareness of the issues that impact America. Sudden cardiac arrest, or SCA, is a
Sudden cardiac arrest, or SCA, is a life-threatening situation when the heart stops beating. Sadly, more young people are going into SCA and do not make it because there is not an automated external defibrillator or an AED onsite. Sadly, one of my cousins, at the age of 14, went into SCA. It was terrifying because neither I knew if he was gonna make it or not. Luckily, there was an AED and people who knew what to do.
About every two minutes, one person dies in the U.S. from sudden cardiac arrest. If an AED is used within the first minute of SCA, the victim's chances of survival increase to 9%. People who have survived SCA survive because there are available AEDs and people who know what to do. We want more people to be aware of this issue and how it is impacting our youth.
In order to make people more aware of this issue, we are educating people on the, on how deadly SCA really is, and we are being made more aware of the rise of SCA in our community. In school, we are learning about the heart, sudden cardiac arrest, and automated external defibrillators in several of our classes.
A few of those classes are social studies, in which we are learning about law and government related to AEDs. In gym, we are learning about heart rate, how to take it, and how it affects us. And in science and health, we are learning about the anatomy of the heart, diseases that you can get, and how to treat them. In language arts, we are also writing essays on how we need portable defibrillators in our school.
We raise money for the Akron Children's Arts Center. Some ways we did this is nail painting, student-dressed on days, shirt sales for support, Valentine's candy grams, and a dance.
You talked about ways that we raised money. Well, our main objective is to spread awareness of sudden cardiac arrest. Ways that we've always spread awareness of sudden cardiac arrest is with awareness posters, trifles, and bulletin boards. This study's different, 5:30 to 7:30, we will also be spreading awareness for Heart Works Pays Off Community Night. There we will have guest speakers, including two students who experienced sudden cardiac arrest, who don't like to use an AED, University of Akron nursing students, and Ron Ringer from APS Athletics. There we will also have booths, including the On Theory booth, and a guest participation booth, which has health facts and food tastings.
Is the cost of a portable AED really worth losing someone's life?
Absolutely not. Our IV interdisciplinary unit was focused on heart awareness, so we're asking you if you can supply us with a portable AED in Litchfield Middle School. The cost for a portable AED is $1,200 to $2,500. We hope you aid us in our efforts of getting a portable AED in Litchfield Middle School and all other APS buildings.
Portable AEDs are a need, not a want. We need them to survive in case of SCA.
Although we do already have two automated external defibrillators at the school, we need a portable one for field trips, sports games, and other excursions. We will be needing one because we may not have one exactly when and where we need it in case of emergency.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Before the students and their staff leave, are there any questions of board members? Any questions?
I'm glad that they presented that, and that's good, because those AED machines are very important, and I don't know, I mean, if we have money to do that, but I know that we can, and some doctors and some medical places will assist in getting AED machines for schools and various places where they need them. And so I think we, one of the things that we could at least do is find out if there are some of those doctors from the cardiac hospitals that will provide some of those AEDs for, maybe a portable for Litchfield and for other schools, and then if we can't, then maybe we can see what we can do, because that is important, and as mentioned, we do have more younger people who are having cardiac, going into cardiac arrest. And I hear this all the time, and the reason I say, my doctor, my daughter is a, is in cardiac rehab at Cleveland Clinic, and she works on people all the time, so their people have these heart attacks, and they're getting younger and younger, but there are people that come in that, you know, we're talking about their early twenties and mid twenties that are going into cardiac arrest and need these things. So thank you all for coming and presenting today, I think this is very nice.
Can I ask you guys a question? Just out of curiosity, I think I know where they are in the building, but can you tell me where the ones are that are at Litchfield? Do you know, are you aware?
There is one on the first floor hallway, across from the gym, and on the third floor hallway. I think there's one in the nursing office, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't know if you can answer this question, but maybe somebody who has this knowledge can get back in touch. So we have AEDs in our schools, but they can't follow our students off-campus. Do the machines we have on-campus have an expiration date to where maybe, instead of putting permanent ones in the future, we get portable ones in the future?
That's a good thought.
Mr. Miller, they do have an expiration date. We're actually starting the process of purchasing replacements for those that are, you know, they're basically, my God, they're probably eight to 10 years old. Okay. Is it possible to start with a portable instead of permanent?
It actually depends on where they're located, because you then also have to worry about the batteries and the pads. Those expire during the lifetime of the cycle, so we're in the process of looking at that.
Yeah, one last question. I don't know if it's last or not, if somebody else. But I just wanted to put this to you guys. What do you think are some ideas of some things that we could do to raise money to help you guys? What would be some of your thoughts or ideas?
We can be by school activity, school activity that takes place after school, or school dress on days.
Okay, we could add after-school school days, where like if someone wants to stay after school, they could pay, they could pay, and then they could stay after school for like an hour or something, like have like fun. Or we had another idea where it was a movie day, where also after school you could watch a movie, if you paid. And then they, and both of those events, we could see if we could get any snacks for the after-school participants.
Thank you, guys. That's great. Thank you for bringing us to.
I mean, more of a comment than a question, for sure, but, I mean, that was a wonderful presentation, and I don't know how much time you guys put into it, or, but it sounds like you put quite a bit of thought and quite a bit of research into it, and so I thought it was a really wonderful presentation. I learned something, which is probably the best thing that you can do in a presentation, right? Because I've known that we have AEDs in our schools, but I did not realize that, you know, we don't have any portable ones on hand for things like that, and I think it's, you guys brought up a really good proposal, so thank you for that, and I'm sure it's something that we'll talk about tomorrow.
Two quick things. One is, if anyone needs an internship in a couple of years, please call. This work is fantastic. I especially love the Heart Works Pays Off, the growth of, a very, very great job. But the second question, more of a question, is, so if we have the equipment, do we have also people who are trained to use the equipment? And if it was portable, would we have to train more people to use it, or would you recommend that we train more people?
Actually, AEDs, they have instructions when you need to use them, so you don't need to have special training in order to use a defibrillator. So when you need to use it, anybody can.
Yeah, and like the instructions are pretty simple. They're not like too, like really complicated.
Great job.
Any other questions, or anyone of these fine students? Now, I know there are parents here, and we thank you for allowing your students to participate and share. Did you take all the pictures you wanted to take?
I think I got them.
Well, again, thank you very much. I know the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and most of all, our treasurer, CFO, is listening very carefully to what you said and the figures that you gave to buy a portable defibrillator, and as Mr. Alexander mentioned, we'll be also investigating whatever partners that we have that might make available some of those things to us as well. Does anybody know the shelf life of the defibrillator? How long are we talking about that it would last? We just heard we're changing up, and we've had them maybe about eight years or so. Okay, all right. Again, thank you so very.
Can I just say one more thing, Robert Walker? The eye contact and the speaking quality and the enthusiasm, I mean, teachers, students, parents, I, you guys were, you know, not just well rehearsed, but you knew what you were talking about, it was obvious, and, you know, there's nothing that we appreciate more than eye contact and not hiding behind stuff and things like that, too. What a great job, I mean, honestly.
Absolutely. Excellent.
Far beyond your years, for sure.
Thank you very much.
We know you have homework and other active activities to do, so thank you so very much for coming.
I would have been a mess in six days. I would have been absolutely a mess.
As they are preparing to leave, we have another presentation, which will give us an update on Project Grad, and that will be done by Ellen Williams. So as they're getting ready to leave, again, thank you for your opportunity to try to take care.
I wanted to hold the baby.
Me, too. Warm, unprepared conversation.
I know it, it was.
I think you took a good job.
Yes, you did. It was awesome.
Of course, we're grateful to have Jackie Silas Butler.
Yes.
In charge of our Project Grad USA, Akron.
USA, I love it.
So I am just going to set the stage for this presentation from Dr. Silas Butler tonight. I am a proud board member of Project Grad, as is the superintendent. The two of us serve as positions, our two positions, in the partnership with Project Grad, and as you heard earlier, we have another board member in the audience, Debbie Walsh. As Dr. Silas, I chair the subcommittee, the program committee for Project Grad's board, and as we've talked about the programs over the years, I said to Dr. Silas Butler, you know, we really need to come and present to the full board to update you. Project Grad has been around for a long time, and I'll mention the history, but I felt as though, you know, we put a lot of emphasis on the scholarships, and you all support the scholarships so much, but the programming has changed over the years and gotten very strategic and a critical part of our work in the district in partnership with Project Grad. And looking forward, we have some things to share with you tonight about what we may want to position Project Grad in partnership with the district in the future because of college and career academies. If you think about what college and career academies is all about, it's about preparing students for life after high school and for successful careers. If you look at the, maybe, if you look at the, the mission statement for Project Grad, in using community partnerships, Project Grad will provide program supports and scholarships. I'm emphasizing the programs and supports specifically for underrepresented, underrepresented students, but to achieve success from kindergarten through career. And I've always thought it's interesting that Project Grad, the GRAD stands for graduation really achieves dreams, but Project Grad Akron here, because you know how we Akronize everything, Project Grad Akron has really focused on preparing students for life after graduation, successful transition to college or to career, and I think that's what we want to make sure we emphasize today. Just to remind everyone, historically, it has been since 2001, and Dr. Small brought a community contingency to look at this national grad program to serve in particular the Booktoe Cluster, to look at the way that we could wrap around supports all the way from kindergarten through high school to support students on this successful transition to life after high school. And so it has been around for a long time. Again, I know you're familiar with Project Grad, but I bet you'll be surprised at some of the programming, the depth of programming, the outstanding leadership of Dr. Silas Butler. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over. She's gonna focus on four areas, four programs tonight, College and Career Central, Grad Mentors, Grad Scholarships, and Bridge to Kindergarten, but then we're gonna tease you at the end about the changes that have happened, particularly this year, and what we hope for in the future. So I'll go ahead and, do you want me to, I'll do this since the clicker's not working. So you guys have a PowerPoint, so you can, so because of the time, I'm going to be very brief, very brief, so I'm going to highlight some things. But before I begin, I would like to introduce Lori Kirchman, who is our director of programs. Lori, people, just please stand. She's our director of programs. And Nancy Dunn, who is our College and Career Central coordinator. Thank Debbie Walsh and Dr. Ellen Williams Woods and Mr. James for always being here and supporting us. So four programs we're gonna talk about very briefly is our College and Career Central, and as you can read, three areas, enrollment, enlistment, and employment. At Booktoe, we work with seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, as well as our seniors. This year, we started in East, and we are down with the seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. You'll see the key program elements for the College and Career Central. Essentially, we have students during a class period, and we co, we co-partner with the teachers to provide the services for the students. These are the areas, again, because I was told to be brief, and you all know me. Everyone knows me, so I'm not gonna talk too long, but these are the areas that we look at, and who's saying to go ahead to the next one. Some of the different auxiliary activities, we have career cruising, we ACT methods test prep, the College and Career Expo, and you could go on down the list of some of the things that we do with our College and Career Central activities. These are our cumulative outcomes from 2015 to 2018, 213 students, you can see how many college applications, how many applications, scholarship applications were awarded, the number of scholarships, over $2 million in scholarships awarded, FAFSA completion, case management services, et cetera. So just one of, these are the highlights, are those students that we've worked with. This school year, as of February 22nd, 53 students, 31 have submitted their FAFSA, non-college applications submitted, you can see the list. We've also piloted, be ready to call her by the wrong name, you know, I want to do your maiden name. Okay, but we're working with the ACT methods test prep for students, and it's a pilot program, and you can see the average increases for our students that we've worked with for that. Our second program is Grad Mentors. We've been doing this, this is our fourth year, we were fortunate to receive funding from the Ohio Department of Education to do our mentoring program, it's called Grad Mentors. This year, we have not received funding from the state, so we can, we recognize it was an important program, so this is something we decided to continue, one-on-one mentoring with our students. You can see the success since 2015, 275 mentor-mentee matches, 176 community volunteers, the match contact hours, they go into the school, they have at least one weekly contact with the students, ton of things. We have an activity tomorrow night, no, it's Wednesday night, with our students, but we do one-on-one, they work with the SMART goals, you name it, but it's a relationship, and it's key, and another time I could go into more detail about how successful that program is. Our scholarships, as Dr. Ellen Williams Woods mentioned, most people know it's for our scholarships. We have awarded $1.7 million in scholarships to Booktoe students since 2006. Ten states will match our scholarships for up to 10 students a year, the scholarships are up to $4,000 that we give to each of the students. Additionally, we have some other scholarships. Additionally, we have some other scholarships, the Leon Harris Book Scholarship, Athan Muriel Walker Scholarship, India Douglas Memorial Scholarship, and Anne Lane Gates. A lot of people don't recognize, if you receive our scholarship, that's great, but we also help other students who may not be eligible for our scholarships. And so we also help them, since last school year, almost nine, almost $850,000 in scholarships to Bookton students that we help those students leverage. The fourth program is our Bridge to Kindergarten Program, B2K. We love this program as the little kids, when we start them off, we've been partnering with Kid State University since the beginning to provide this program. Start with the summer academy, we work with the families, we work with the students, and then we have things throughout the school year with them. Family support throughout the school year is a literacy-based program. That young lady that's with the, I say the child, the young lady that's holding her was one of our scholars who received our scholarship, she is now teaching school. So it's a lot of success with our students. And then we'll go to the next one. These are our outcomes with our Bridge to Kindergarten, the number of students we've served. It started in the Bookton Cluster, we now open it up to other students. These show our, our testing gains. And this summer, we will offer the program at Schumacher and Helen Arnold. When the Bookton Cluster, basically what we do, we have the kids come in from all the different schools to it. This year, we've decided to expand and have it at two different sites. We work with the families, the grandparents, I think I've gone over my time, but this is hopefully. Thank you. I'm like, okay, that clock is ticking kind of fast. So, but we, the Akron Community Foundation did the On the Table program and we had our grandparents working with our program and we found some of the things that they thought they needed, and so we wrote a grant together for that program. And I can't tell you whether or not we've been awarded, but just watch the paper next week. That's all I'm going to say. Again, we're going to expand to our second site this summer. And our partnering for success, this shows you, we work with Akron Public Schools, SCI. We're working with them on the Gates to and Throughs program for those kids who get out of high school and let's get them through college. We work with universities, Junior Achievement, United Way, GAR, tons of volunteers. Many of you have been supportive of us. And we can go to the next one. I've mentioned, we've already expanded to East. Next year, we'll be in the seniors with East. Next year at Bookton, we'll have the 10th and 11th graders. And our future, this is what you guys focus on, we want to provide College and Career Central program to all students in the Akron Public Schools and, and then with the middle schools, Bookton and East to support, to be the center to support the College and Career Academies. That's it in a nutshell. We really thank the Akron Public Schools for all of your support because we know it takes all of us working together. Thank you. So the big takeaways, the depth of services, and we kept the amount of detail in your handout because we know ten-minute presentations, it's impossible to capture, so I really hope you look at the list, the broad list of services that Project Grad provides now. You know, it really started as a program that was focused exclusively in the Bookton Cluster and it focused on lots of different services. And what Dr. Silas Butler has done is really get it focused on key leverage points. And the College and Career Central is sort of their major program as well as the kindergarten program, but now expanding it to East. And then you heard, the goal, the vision, is to really become that college and career access service where students get additional supports to sit side by side. How many of you now have completed the FAFSA yourself, right, for your kids? It is the most complex, right? It is horrendous, but they provide the service side by side to be able to support families through and through the application process and all of the student support. So all of that being said, not thinking just Project Grad is Bookton anymore, that's where the scholarship still will be, but a broader view of Project Grad in the district and potentially in the future across all of our high schools in partnership with Rachel Teckah and Mark Black with the College and Career Academies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions, board member?
I have one comment. I appreciate what you've done and taking it to another level. I've watched Project Grad grow for a number of years and being in Bookton several years ago, working there and seeing how it was, but seeing what you've done now is really, really good, so I appreciate what you're doing to help our students.
We thank our staff. We have a lot of volunteers, our interns and everyone, but it's, it's everyone working together, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, but I do have a question because I was waiting to see it and I saw because there's been a big emphasis, we were just at a meeting with United Way, with SCI, dealing with pre-kindergarten, getting students ready. So I noticed you were tied in with that as well to make sure that we're preparing our students because one of the concerns is if they're not ready to go into kindergarten, then we know they're not going to be ready for third grade. They're not going to be ready to pass the third grade guarantee, to meet that reading requirement, and we know that that's many of our at-risk students, at-risk families that may not have the ability. So you're reaching those students with all of the extra things that you have that I wasn't aware of. It's wonderful that you're being able to reach those students and tie in so we can partner together to be able to achieve the goal that we want in the end. So thank you for your contribution, thank you for your work.
And you see the real outcomes. Dr. Silas Butler early recognized the need to work with the families coming from either preschool or no preschool experience and bridging that transition into kindergarten. And the real outcomes that they're boosting their readiness so that they're getting a step ahead compared to all the other students.
Can you tell me one of where your next fundraiser is?
Oh, that's a great question. So our next fundraiser is Monday, April 8th. It's March Gradness.
That's a fun one.
It's a ton of fun, I can kid you not, if you've gone, you'd love it, but it's March Gradness, it's at Greystone from 4:30 to 7:30. It's just a blast. It raises money for our scholarships and our college access, college access program.
Informal fun games.
You can wear your jersey. It's the same day as the NCAA Finals Men's Game, so people are really into the sport. It's fun. And then after that, save the date, Saturday, October 12th, we're going to have our TV Dream Celebration again. It's a Saturday night again. Those of you that attended, if you liked the new format, and then we're going back to having our separate scholarship program, and I think that's May 14th, Lori, Tuesday, May 14th, and it's at Grace, not Greystone, St. George's. So we're going to do our scholarship and our mentoring recognition at that time. Is there good questions like that? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll receive a motion to approve our regular meeting minutes. They're moved properly, seconded, roll any vote on. Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
You know, that's both of our regular meeting minutes. We did it separate, okay. Oh, okay, I noticed they were separate. Okay, we need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for February 11th.
Second.
And properly moved by Bravo and seconded by Mr. Mansfield. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bill, do I have to stand from January 28th? I said yes, I should have stayed because I wasn't here.
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration twenty-seven personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved, properly moved and?
Second.
And seconded by, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call. Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration eighteen business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved.
They're properly moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration eighteen Business Affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved or properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I just wanted to point out in item one, the middle school in Algebra I, new adoption, and thank all the staff that worked on that and also in advance of the vote, thank the board for their support.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Our superintendent's report?
Uh, two items tonight, Mr. President. One is we're vastly approaching our move-in at 10 North Main. Beginning in mid-April, we will most likely start with having our IT department in there. Then during the week of spring break, April 22nd through the 26th, we'll have the majority of the departments in this building moving in. By April 29th, 70 North Broadway will close permanently. We'll still have items in here and people will still need to access the building, but all of our personnel will be moved out. And then, starting June 3rd through the 14th, we will begin the process of moving the Staff Development Center staff over to 10 North Main. The one thing I had talked about was having, we'll need to talk about having a ribbon cutting for the building and I kind of envisioned having a short board meeting where you pass resolutions renaming the building, the Sylvester Small Administration Building and renaming the second floor of the Conrad on Staff Development Center, cutting the ribbon and then maybe having some tours. And now I forget what date I was thinking of.
Saturday, May 18th.
May 18th, yes. So, but we'll talk about that as, and send, you know, a poll out to see if you're available by that. I think maybe mid-afternoon, similar to what we have done in the past for some of our COC. That way, you know, on a weekend, community people could come, you know, and be able to see it and take some tours through the building. The next item is on Thursday, a state of the schools, and you know I do not like preparing my speech for that because I need a lot of help on just making sure, because so many activities happen during the year, it's hard to even, you know, recall everything, so there will be some frantic phone calls. Most of it's done, but there will be a few frantic phone calls over the next couple of days before I have to turn it over to Mark Williamson for some final edits, but everyone's getting on my case to get that done because they all want to tell me, you know, what I left out and what I should be adding, but we're almost done with that, but that'll be Thursday at Tangier.
Most important, of course, when will our first board meeting be in the new, in the new space? Do we know yet?
Um, ribbon cutting day.
Well, and not if he's closing the building.
Actually, you know, actually, you're right, it will be, I think, the first?
May 13th.
May 13th, yeah, that's, we'll have two board meetings that week.
All right, if you need any tips on speeches, call us, we'll fill them.
Right, absolutely. I'm all for that.
Any questions or comments to superintendent? No president's report, is it a treasurer's report? No treasurer's? Oh. Take it less. Two quick, two quick answers. Okay. The first is, handout that we reviewed at Finance Committee.
This is on our budgeting process. I know this is not the most exciting task ever, including myself. So as you remember from previous highlights to the board, we have this calendar document where we talk through all the connected documentation to and from the state, the county Budget Commission, Board of Education, about what we're required to do as it relates to the budget. We're pleased to report with some technology enhancements on the budgeting process that we trimmed about a month off the process to and from the engagement to the staff. And while we always strive for more of a bottom-up driven budget process because of our size and scope, it is somewhat top-down driven. So what we asked for staff to do is to participate, participate by sharing with us the exceptions in their budget. And so if there's ever a philosophy to be called, I would say, call it budget by exception philosophy. But what we want to do in this feedback system ultimately to the superintendent and then to me, as we review the exceptions, is it doesn't reflect the district's goals and priorities of the strategic plan of continuous improvement process to the state of Ohio. So while we've been able to cut a month off the total program to do this, a lot of credit is due to Todd Atkins by employing some more technology through Munis. It's an Excel process called cubes that allows us to, we went through the sample of one at Finance Committee where we could download a budget and then make edits to it within a couple of minutes. And for a hundred and fifty or so thousand line items in a budget, a couple of minutes makes a lot of good progress back to us. So cutting a month off of it is pretty exponential in terms of return. So I'll be anxious to report back to you, through the superintendent, about some of those budget priorities, especially as we plant the seeds going into next year about some of the capital improvement needs that we've been talking about that aren't funded. The next update, check out to the computer here. I just wanted to show you the website and shout out to our technology department for helping us get this going. In the fall, you signed a contract with Clearcut. We demoed a little bit of this. If you go to the district's webpage, under the district tab, see right in the middle there is a new page we have assigned called Equity and Transparency. And that's, if you click that, we are live with the financials. And this is one of the best dashboards that we've seen nationally. This originated out of Massachusetts and I know they're in Wisconsin, a couple of other states. The thing I like about this is it wasn't just a financial dashboard. If you see in the middle blue bar section there, those are all of the areas that we intend to report on. Right now, we're live with expenditures and some student data. And so I encourage you and the media to go out and take a look at our dashboard. Some of this is live information and we're holding back some of the student-employee test scores and state aid documentation until we get the Department of Education streaming us information. This is a pretty big request for them, so we want them to stream information to us. And then ultimately, I think the success of this dashboard is it's just not an external tool. That the goal that we had for this was also be a management tool internally, so we could do comparisons of buildings. You know that we've got a lot of questions about why is this elementary spending this much money and this one is another, right? And we have the equitable conversation about leveling the playing field, right, not about being equal in the amount of money that we spend. David and I had a conference in Columbus where we spoke to this last week, so we're really excited that this is both an internal tool and an external tool, that we can take a deeper dive for management staff as well as the public. And this is one of the few sites that we've seen that has been able to do both of this. I just wanted to show you the highlights of this and encourage you to take a look and then as we post new information to it, we'll let you know. Good? That's all I have. Thanks.
Any question to treasurer? It wasn't so people, no.
That's great. Just a comment. I know that Finance Committee's pushed and worked really hard on this, you know, with various members over the years, and I know that it's been a priority for Mr. Pendleton since coming on as treasurer. So, kudos to all involved for working so hard. Technology people, too. Gosh, I can't even imagine the lengths there, but.
I know, right?
Good stuff.
Thank you. At this time, committee reports, legal contracts, and policy committee?
So, our legal and policy committee met on February 14th, and thank you very much to the board for your support of the memorandum of understanding with the victim assistance program. That's for the whole crisis mutual or response mutual aid. And just one thing to point out here that Mr. Rambler emphasized, and Mr. Pendleton did, that APS does have a phenomenal district crisis team already in place, and this MOU addresses those infrequent occurrences that could really tax the resources of this district to a point where we just need extra help. And then, we also talked a lot more about our own board policy development and developing our committees. So, we talked through the purpose of our legal and policy committee and why it's really time right now for a reset on how we cross up policies and guidelines, plus respecting the past work that we've already done and how important that is.
Yes, and we talked about also about Niola and how Niola comes up and gives information out twice a year and how we should, the policy should be done, policy and guidelines, administrative guidelines should be done with administration as well as staff together. And having Niola helps provide us with that additional support because we follow their guidelines, and if something occurs maybe down the line that says that this occurred, they can come and give us support that we are following basically their guidelines as well as our guidelines. So, that, I call it the legal support that we can use to help us. And then, we talked about the audit, state audit files and so forth there. But, we also went down to the technology changes and policies, which was by the bylaws and the board that we have, the technical changes through the policies that through our policies, we made different technological changes, and that has been something that's very good. We're streamlining what we did before because there were policies that we were getting two of. We get the old policy, and we get the policy with the updates, so we're kind of streamlining that. So, instead of getting one, we will get just, getting two, we will get one policy that will just show the corrections versus two different policies. So, that is something that's really, really good to change. We started that early on, but now it's really going into effect. And thank Ryan for helping us and coming together and bringing it together for us to help us, as well as we had our students, our student representatives who were there at this meeting as well, and I thought that was really good because they came in and they asked some questions and.
Very good.
Very good, yes. And questions that I think we as board members would be asking, and they were asking as student representatives, so I thought that was good as well. But, we're doing some upgrading and changing on the policy committee, and we will do more reporting out like this here to you also, so you have the updates, but you will still get your electronical copies as well.
Go Policy Committee.
And I got Mrs. Lasher, who'll come on and be that good addition for me.
Our Finance and African Management Committee?
Yes, we last met on the 21st of this month. In addition to the budgeting software that our CFO talked about in 10 North Main that our superintendent talked about, how we're moving in on time, we also talked a little bit about the budget of 10 North Main and how we're on time on that, and that we're getting ready to move out and move in. We also talked about workers' compensation. It's a topic we've been talking about for a little while now, but specifically, we reviewed legal services performed by Wyden Associates, and they provide legal representation to us for general workers' compensation matters, and we will begin negotiating with them and presenting a contract to the board before the end of this fiscal year regarding their work for us for workers' compensation.
And just a couple of other highlights. It's time to look at health insurance again. So, currently conducting a rate analysis on that, and Mr. Pendleton's starting to get information back. And we also asked him as far as our plan goes and the different components of the plan, just to pull some information looking at other districts around Ohio to see what types of coverages they have and participation amounts and those kinds of things. So, looking at all, looking at all of that, and I know he even got some information back today, so I'm sure we'll be talking about that again. And then, he already did the brief demo of ClearGov, which we also reviewed in Finance Committee.
Thank you. Instructional policy and student achievement.
Okay, just a quick update about the Martha Holden Jennings grant. As you guys know, the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent and Carla Chapman have been meeting with representatives from the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation for the past six, over the past six months regarding submitting a multi-year grant, if I could just read tonight, to support our middle school, college, and career academy work. Our instructional policy committee have been receiving updates during our committee meetings as Dr. McWilliams and Ms. Chapman have been meeting with staff to determine next steps for our middle school academy strategies. The grant was submitted last week with a focus on the instructional practices needed to support our students as they master the competencies on our Portrait of a Graduate, which is right, dead center. And the grant proposal includes approximately $100,000 per year, including one year of planning to determine how to transform our middle school instruction embedded with social, emotional components to students' middle school experience. We should know by the end of March whether or not we are awarded that grant, and fingers crossed. Yeah, so.
Just a couple of other things that are at your place, or I believe they are. You should have a College and Career Academy update. We do love that Ms. Teckah and her group provide the pictures along with that as well. We believe those definitely are worth a thousand words. The gauntlet has been thrown to the I Promise School that they've been shown how fabulous this is, so stand by to see what they come up with. Just a few things to point out. It is expo season, so across the district, you'll see several of the, several pictures from the expos, career expos that have been shown or been throughout the district to prepare students for the College and Career Academies. Also, want to point out, and I'm going to probably get the number wrong as I try to remember, but I know we have had, I believe it's 11 teams make state for robotics, that makes state for robotics for this year, which considering, this is a program that's only been in existence in Akron Public Schools for a couple of years and has spread from one or two schools to numerous schools throughout with our STEM learning. Am I right? Is it 11? Do we, and that, was that this weekend? Did anybody go to next? Do you know if anybody got to advance?
Yes.
How many, do you know?
I think it was before we posted.
Standby for news on how many advanced, but what an amazing accomplishment to go from not having this program just a few years ago to, you know, taking the state by storm. So, in the typical Akron way. And then, there is an I Promise School update as well. The interviews are underway for new staff, just highlighting that, for the additional staff, not placing or adding. And you'll see some of the field trips that are coming right now or have happened within the last few weeks as well. Exciting for the engineering day that's this week. Like I said, hopefully, we'll get more pictures of theirs as well because I love the new images. Yeah. Any questions about that, feel free to ask Dr. McWilliams Woods or Ms. Teckah.
On the I Promise update, the last proposal for new office space to the Family Resource Center?
That is, you want to talk about that, Owen, too?
Well, they, the Family Resource Center, they bring requests to the superintendent and myself during our executive committee meetings, and so they're just rearranging some space for the Family Resource Center to be able to bring in additional partners to support their families.
So, these are, when you say resources, these are, is it simply the food?
Right.
Clothing?
The food bank that's there, job and family services that's there, mental health supports that are right there in the Family Resource Center.
Any unfinished business?
I was just going to mention two very quick things, just for the front of the, I can't find it now, but if you're curious as to see, you know, the discussion about the Academic Distress Commission, one of our emails that came through, Youngstown is searching for a new CEO, and if you read the job description, it's really, I don't know, it just, I find the whole thing very, and I know we all do, I mean, it's not that we necessarily agree with all of the authority that the commission, that a commission like that has, but the fact that they would bring in a CEO and then give them lots of authority that we as board members in the district don't even have, and then go, you know, so if things do turn around, I mean, how do you say, well, you did such a great job because you got to operate outside of what every other district in Ohio normally does? But, I also found their job description very interesting. So, if you just want to see what kind of folks they tend to look for and what experience or qualifications you need or don't need, check out that job description. It's online somewhere. I can't find the email again or the post that I found. And then, just to the opiate discussion, I just thought it was timely and I didn't want to slow things down earlier, but I thought it was interesting that SUMO, and there was a recent article about SUMO eliminating opiates from, I think that, you know, anesthesiology and maybe another department or something.
I think, right, it's a couple departments.
Yeah, so, just an interesting take from a local hospital that, you know, is trying to address the opiate crisis in a different way by removing them from some important parts of the hospital. I thought it was interesting.
That's it. Using other alternatives to help with pain management.
Right. That's it.
Can I just give a little bit of an update on the robotics team? There are only 80 teams that make state, and 11 of them are from Akron Public Schools. If you think about their 800 districts throughout the state of Ohio, we sent 11 out of 8.
Amazing. That's really cool.
Any new business? At this time, we do need to meet for executive session and pursuant to Ohio revise code Section 121.22G3 to discuss disputes in our board and or the school district that are subject to, subject of impending or imminent court action, and also revise code 121.22G4 to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment. I need any motions?
Okay.
They're probably moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.